Call to order, the regular meeting for Tuesday, May 19th, 2015 of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners is now after seven o'clock. Before I move to the invocation, I'd like to mention that Iredell County and the town of Mooresville lost two great public servants in the last two days. Frank Rader, former town council member and a real participant across the board in many causes in Iredell County and throughout the United States in terms of Olympic work, passed away. And he was a frequent visitor in these chambers for regular meetings and took the time to be informed of what was going on and always had an informed opinion as a result. So he will be missed. Also, current serving council member from the town of Mooresville, Mac Herring, passed away last night. So he was in his third term and was a very approachable individual. And both Frank and Mac will be sorely missed. And our thoughts and prayers are with both the Rader and Herring family. If we could please bow our heads. Lord, we come to you this evening and thank you for the opportunity to gather to conduct the people's business. We lift up the families of Mac Herring and Frank Rader, ask that you provide comfort to them in these days of loss and that they be able to take comfort in your presence. Lord, we ask that you guide our thoughts and words and deeds this evening, that we may reach good, sound decisions and take into account all of the relevant information as we make decisions. In your name we pray. Amen. If we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I have four adjustments I'd like to bring to your attention. First is I'd like to remove, under Administrative Matters, item B. This is memo number five. Under Announcements of Vacancies Occurring on Boards and Commissions, I'd like to add item C, Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees, one announcement. And under Appointments to Boards and Commissions, I'd like to add A, Troutman Board of Adjustment, one appointee, and B, Troutman Planning Board, two appointees.
Is there a motion to adopt the adjustments to the agenda as outlined by Mr. Smith?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Yeah, I was gonna, sorry, I was gonna add one item of new business for proclamation.
Okay. We will revisit item four, adjustments to the agenda. For Mr. Robertson.
If we could add, under New Business, a proclamation with reference to the I-77 toll roads.
Okay. The motion is to add, under New Business, the consideration of a resolution regarding the Interstate 77 toll road project. Any further discussion on adding that to the agenda? Hearing done. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Mr. Smith, if you want to set the stage here.
We have an employee tonight, and this is under presentation of special recognitions and awards, employee that's gonna be retiring that we'd like to recognize. And his name is Richard Boyd, and he is in our Building Standards Department. And I think I'm gonna turn this over to his direct superior, Mr. Lynn Niblock, the director of that department, for some comments and information about Richard.
If y'all would just come on up. Before we do the actual presentation, I'd like to say a few words about Richard. Richard has been an employee of Iredell County for over 40 years. He's seen more change in this county than, as an employee, than I think probably anyone else. He's the oldest rat in the Iredell County barn. You know, Richard has not only tremendous knowledge about building standards and code enforcement that he has applied through his career, but he has a real sense of service to people and understanding that businesses and people, as they attempt to navigate the requirements, the ever-changing and ever-more stringent requirements of the building codes, that rather than just finding a way to say no, he would work to find a way to say yes and work with those individuals and businesses. And that's the kind of attitude that we really treasure and appreciate greatly. So at this point, I will turn the microphone over to the man who knows you best, Mr. Lynn Niblock, and then follow with some closing remarks from Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As the chairman said, Richard is retiring from Building Standards with over 40 years of service to, as a code official in this county right here. And it's been my pleasure to have had the opportunity to work with him for 30 of those 40 years. And somebody said sometime, "There are no strangers, only friends that we have not met." Richard's had the opportunity to meet many people over those 40 years, and he now counts quite a few of those as friends. And although we're gonna miss him greatly in Building Standards, I do wish him only success and happiness and all the best as he enters this new phase in his life. Thank you.
Folks, I'm gonna take you back to July of 1981. I doubt Richard remembers this, but I was a young man who had just moved to Statesville attempting to open up a business here. And it seems there was a problem with the inspection of the building. And it looked like an insurmountable problem, and it was gonna be considerable expense. And I'd never met this man in his, in my entire life. I hadn't lived here long. Like all young fellows starting out the business, I didn't have an abundant supply of capital. And I was wondering how I was gonna overcome this problem, open up my business and get going. And one fellow in inspections was taking, I thought perhaps, an unduly tough stance on the statute or the ordinance or whatever. But then one day, Richard Boyd, no, it was, it was in regard to the city, but one day, Richard Boyd stood up and came up and said, "Maybe we can figure something out." He'd, at first, when I met Lynn Niblock, I thought, "The longer that you stayed in inspections, the slower you talked." But Richard talked slow back then, but he made a lot of sense. And he says, "I'll, I'll get back to you. Let me give this some thought." And the next day, he proposed a solution that met the intent of the statute without costing me a whole lot of money. Now, I would be indebted to the man enough if it had just been that. But when I came on the board as the county commissioner, one observation that I made is, the most successful people that I've witnessed in county government are those who administered their charge. But in the administration of that charge, they keep in mind that the law or the statute or regulation has impacts on people's everyday life. They don't break the law, but they figure ways to enforce the law while mitigating harmful consequences. And Richard had a unique ability to do that. And I don't think that the people in this county ever realize how much, how much worry he alleviated, how much expense he saved people in the administration of the law while maintaining the structural integrity of buildings all over this county, but being flexible and being concerned about the administration of his charge. And he's, I can tell you, I do business with a lot of folks in the construction business, and this man's well thought of by every one of them. I can tell you, in the 20 years I've been here, many times, you know, and I'll, my fellow commissioners, forgive me, I'll quote a Democrat this evening, "You don't have to be really smart in office, you just have to have the phone numbers of some smart people." And I've got Richard's cell number. And I called him many times, and I said, "Richard, I've got a problem. Can, can you help this guy?" And so many times, they called me back and thanked me for putting them in touch with Richard, and he came with this solution to help, all the while faithfully executing his charge, but saving them time and money and worry. That's a true public servant, and that's the kind of man this is. And I just, I have come to respect him so much. And the other thing that has to be, an attribute that has to be apparent in a county employee is, is that when I seek their assistance, they give me all the credit. And he was always very gracious in, in dealing with me and dealing with the public, to the point that folks respected him, they respected the county, and I gained a lot of respect that I didn't earn because of him. And I'm indebted to you. You've been a blessing to me, this board and this county, Richard. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Richard, this plaque says, "H. Richard Boyd, in appreciation for your 23 years of dedicated service to Iredell County." Twenty-three?
Seventeen with the city.
And seventeen with the city. So 40 years in the, in both saddles. Okay. Well, thank you again, and I think Commissioner Johnson said it for all of us, you know, your, your human touch and your ability to enforce the law, but to do so in a common sense way, is an attribute that we need to continue, and I, and I trust that you have trained everyone that follows in your footsteps. Okay. Well, the floor is now yours.
I'm kinda like a Baptist preacher here, but I do, do like Steve there, and he's a Baptist preacher also, so, but I'm not gonna stay too long here. I just wanna, I wanna give a lot of thanks to a lot of people. I wanna start off with, and like I guess you should there with Mr. Niblock, I appreciate him having faith in me to move me along as for where he did and to move me in the position that I'm at. I'm at the road now what Mr. Jeff Chuby is right now, when I come in from the field and started in the management. I just didn't know if I wanted to get out of the field or not. I like being a rat in the, in the, in the field instead of being into the office and all, but after doing both the jobs, which Mr. Niblock said I could do because I didn't wanna give up both of them, I said, "I wanna do my inspections and all." He said, "Well, that's fine, that's fine, Richard, do, do them both." And he said, "I don't care." And like always, he was always right with it, too. After a little bit there, coming back to him, and I said, "Lynn, it's too tough doing both of these jobs." I said, "I guess I'm gonna have to quit one of them and, and just come into office with you." And he said, "Well, I was wondering how long it'd take you," so, in there. But I appreciate very much, Lynn, you, he's, man, you guys up here don't know just how much that he gives to the county and how much he does for the county and all with it. One of the things I'd just like to say, one thing was, I was the, you talk about the oldest rat there, I was the second rat in the city of Statesville, as being the electrical inspector there. As soon as they had electricity for a few years, Mr. Gamble, I don't know if any of y'all recall him, he was the first electrical inspector in the city of Statesville, and I was the second one. And as soon as the opportunity came, I went to the county as fast as I could, but it took me 17 years to get there, but I haven't left until hopefully another week in there. But Lynn required me to write a letter as a retirement, and that was a hard letter to write because I told him, I wrote in there that, that even after all the years, I was very reluctant about, about leaving. I, I loved this job. I don't know what I'll do, except for fish, but, but I've enjoyed it, but I just kinda felt like it was time to, time to move on in there. But one credit there that I'd like to make to the board is, I've been to many, many meetings over the year in state offices and all. And much of the state with the inspection divisions complaining, fussing about their leaders, their commissioners, their council people, their leaders that they come back with, because of the fact is that they say they get no support back at home, that, you know, all it is, is, "This is my friend, this is my buddy, this is what I want you to do," or "Your butt's out, you're outta here." You know, you, you don't keep a job and all with it. And I can always honestly say, honestly, I could say on here, that I have the support of the commissioners, the council folks, when I was there to do my job, and they allowed me to do my job on there and all. And gentlemen, I want to say to you guys on here, that I appreciate y'all, I appreciate the backing that y'all give the inspection department because we are out here to enforce and to try to represent the county in a way to which that we're supposed to in code enforcement because these are the, protecting the people with the safety and the welfare of the people and all in here. And we don't want to enforce any more than what is absolutely necessary, like Mr. Johnson said, but we appreciate y'all's support and all with it. And I thank you very much on it. Hope you catch a lot.
Item six, appointments before the board. We have a request from the Health Department to review the 214 State of the County Health Report and the 2015 Community Health Assessment Process. Ms. Jane Murray is here. If you would please, look forward to hearing your report.
I want to introduce Megan Kinley. Megan is our Community Health Transformation Planner and our Healthy Carolinians Task Force facilitator, and she's going to be doing the report tonight.
Welcome, Megan.
Good evening, Commissioners and County Manager. It's a pleasure to speak to you tonight. What I'm gonna share with you is the 2014 State of the County Health Report, as well as our process for the 2015 Community Health Assessment. This report is one of the many requirements in our North Carolina Department of Public Health Consolidated Agreement and part of the North Carolina Public Health Accreditation Standards. The State of the County Health Report is an interim document released annually the three years between the community health assessments. This report is not an inclusive document detailing and measuring the program output for all aspects of the Health Department or the Health Planning Section, only those that were determined to be priority issues during the action plans for the 2011 Community Health Assessment. The report is made up of current demographic information, state and local health data, and community progress made on the selected high-level health priorities during the previous year. As you'll see, most of you should have the report in front of you. One of the largest issues our county is currently facing is the growing infant mortality rate. For the first time in over three years, Iredell's infant mortality rate exceeds that of the state among all racial categories. In addition to Iredell's poor performance, there also exists a significant racial disparity. The rate of infant mortality for African-Americans is nearly five times that of Caucasians. A preventative contributor to this disparity is tobacco use and secondhand exposure, which is most prevalent among the non-white population and related to a multitude of poor birth outcomes. The leading causes of death, which were the same this year as they have been for the three previous years, are heart disease, cancer, and chronic lower respiratory disease. As depicted on page three of the document, you'll see that seven of the top 10 leading causes of death are chronic disease-related. Fifty-two percent, so over half of all deaths in our county in 2013, were caused by preventable chronic diseases. For the first time in history, the life expectancy of this current generation will likely be shorter than that of their parents due to the increased prevalence of these said chronic diseases. While these problems are the most common and costly, they're also preventable through lifestyle changes. The underlying contributors to many of these chronic conditions are tobacco use, unhealthy eating, and physical inactivity, which also happen to be the selected areas that we chose during the 2011 action planning process for the Community Health Assessment. So if you look at the tobacco information, you'll see that tobacco-related illnesses remain the leading cause of preventable death in North Carolina. It's important to point out that compared to the state, we do have a fewer total adult smokers. And over the past three years, as you see on page five of the document, the smoking rates have slowly began to decrease. While we're nowhere near where we would like to be, we're continuously striving to eliminate tobacco use among Iredell County residents. In the past year alone, we've assisted local businesses and multi-unit housing establishments in adopting tobacco-free policies. We hosted a kick butts event where we had 80 local Boys and Girl Scouts collect nearly nine gallons of cigarette litter on county-owned property. And we've provided 18 scholarships for cessation classes to residents that are ready to kick their addiction. In regards to healthy eating, Iredell County ranks better than the state in fruit and vegetable consumption by nearly 3%, but we're nowhere near the healthy North Carolina 2020 goal of 29% of all the local population consuming the recommended amount of produce. In an effort to reach this goal, the Health Department has worked to increase access to healthy foods by providing local farmers' markets with enhancements such as new signage, promotional materials, and radio advertisements, so that residents will know where to go for affordable fruits and vegetables. Share the Harvest, which is a program sponsored by the Health Department, also saw growth this past year. Through the program, growers donate excess produce, and it's then disseminated to local food pantries so that fresh fruits and vegetables are available to their low-income clients that don't have access to it already. Physical activity, which was the final of the three selected health priorities by the Healthy Carolinians Task Force, is a crucial component to preventing chronic conditions and premature death. Only half of Iredell County residents get the recommended amount of aerobic activity, and only a third get the recommended amount of strength training that they need. The Health Department facilitated the United Way's Health Task Force, made up by 14 local agencies and medical professionals, where they also determined physical activity was their top health concern. This data is helping drive future plans. So over the next year, the United Way will begin a partnership with the Health Department to increase physical activity opportunities throughout the community. In addition, the planned improvements that will take place at the Scotts Rosenwald Park, like the innovative hopscotch sidewalk and the bike racks that we're placing at various government agencies to accommodate the biking needs of the community, will all have an impact on the physical health of the community as well. This is a result of the environment most Americans live in, where work is sedentary and unhealthy foods are accessible and affordable. Because of this, America is one of the most unhealthy developed nations in the world. It's important to understand that the current health issues that we're discussing won't disappear without a substantial amount of change, which is why the Health Department seeks to implement policies, environmental changes, and establish partnerships throughout the state, region, and county that will allow the health impacts that we're making now become sustainable for years to come, so that in the future, we won't see these problems as prevalent, and also create healthier lives now for those in our community. Currently, at the Health Department, we're working on our much broader Community Health Assessment, which is a required document that we're supposed to do every four years. There are businesses and agencies throughout the county that are also required to complete Community Health Assessments, including Iredell Memorial Hospital, the United Way, and ICARE. So they join us in our community assessment process so that we can join efforts and create a unanimous action plan, and it's more sustainable. Part of the Community Health Assessment process includes gathering primary and secondary health data. The primary data is being collected right now through two broad-scope measurement tools, one being an adult survey with a child health component, and the other, a youth survey for ages 12 to 18. The surveys have been deployed throughout all geographic areas of the county to give citizens an opportunity to provide input on how they perceive the health issues that they face in the county. The survey is also accessible on our homepage to anyone that hasn't had access to it already. And the task force is made up of 25 local and regional organizations that together decide what the top health concerns are and engage in long-term strategic health planning. These plans are monitored over time to evaluate and report improvements of overall health in Iredell County, and we're looking forward to bringing you that completed document in January of 2016, after the task force and the Board of Health approves it. So it was a pleasure speaking to you. Does anyone have any questions?
Do you see any improvement, or likely improvement, in terms of physical activity and some of the issues you identified as particularly problems, tobacco use and all, through the increasing use of wellness programs associated with employer insurance?
We feel that we have. We partner strongly with the county's wellness program, and we provide them resources, and we actually have a goal, a measurable goal of, I believe it's by 3%. This was set in 2011, and we'll be able to measure it this next year through the Center for State Health Statistics. They'll provide us with that data, so we'll be able to measure our goals. And then once our goals, once we see if we've completed our goal, we'll be able to look back and associate it with things. So we'll be able to better answer that with our Community Health Assessment.
You know, what seems most concerning, because a lot of the statistics seem to track, you know, pretty similar to North Carolina general statistics, except for the, the rise in infant mortality.
Yeah.
And is there a, a single cause for that, or is it the lack of prenatal care, or is it risky conduct?
It's a combination of all, we believe. It's hard to pinpoint exactly what it is. Because of the numbers and where you see demographically the rise is, we feel that tobacco use, it has a lot to do with it, because the population that is, has the higher rate are also among the population with the larger smoking rate and tobacco use. So we attribute it to that because that's a preventable condition, but we also would like to increase prenatal care and education among all populations so that this number can go down, so that we could at least match the state and then be better.
Are there any other comments or questions?
I'd like to make one comment. With my short tenure on the Health Board, I would just like to say that I am pleasantly not surprised, but I, I'm, I'm glad to see that our Health Board, from our Health Board to Health Director to Management and down to the employees of the Health Department, we have a very committed group of people in our Health Department. We really, really do. I mean, they get it, they understand the problems, and they're going after solutions for them. And I'd just like to commend them for the job that they do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Additional comments? Once again, thank you for the report. Even more importantly, we look forward to the quadrennial report you're working on in January, and then figuring out how we can bring to fruition some action plans to start to influence some of the, the negative trends or the issues that you've identified.
Yeah.
You know, said that a plan without action is just hallucination.
That's so true.
So we need to follow up, and so we look forward to, as a board and with all the other stakeholders in the community.
And so we look forward to, as a board and with all the other stakeholders in the community, working with the Health Department. And once again, appreciate all the work that you do.
Thanks for your opportunity.
We'll now move to a public hearing. I'll declare a public hearing to be open to consider a tax increment grant for RL West. And Mr. Robert Carney will present that request.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, thank you so much for giving me the time and opportunity to come before you this evening. My name is Robert Carney, and I serve as the Executive Director for the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation. I'm here tonight in request of a tax increment grant incentive, or TIG as it's known, for the Langtree Development Company LLC. The tax incentive, or tax increment grant, is an incentive driven by performance-based net new tax revenue, meaning that the company must commit and perform necessary promises and investment commitments before they ever receive incentive monies. We've recently brought in the Bleakley Advisory Group to fully understand the impacts of Langtree's successful development. Expected Langtree project impacts as a result of the TIG incentive is over 1 million square foot of new vertical development, 218 million in new taxable market value, 121 million in annual retail sales in the county, 1,945 permanent employees, 65 million in annual payroll, 2,331,000 in annual property taxes, and 2.4 million in local sales taxes to Mooresville and Iredell County. This project requires TIG assistance to meet the cost and demands of a 750-space parking deck. This deck will support the development of a Hilton DoubleTree Hotel, Hotel and Conference Center, as well as a SwimMac Aquatic Center. We request a motion to approve a tax incentive grant based on the full development of the following: 50,000 square foot SwimMac recreational development facility, swimming facility; 250-room Hilton DoubleTree Full Service Hotel and Conference Center; and a 750-space parking deck. Upon successful development, Iredell County would agree to pay 45% of increased tax value over the baseline value of $70,499,770, with the incentive period starting in 2018 for a period not to exceed 13 years for a maximum town and county incentive amount of $14.5 million, or whichever comes first. On behalf of the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation, I thank you again for allowing me to present tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have regarding this project.
Are there any comments or questions from the Board? I did not note that there were any members of the public that had signed up for the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to be heard at this time? Hearing none. We've been briefed up on the ins and outs of the tax increment grant on several in-depth briefings. And at this point, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion. The motion is to approve a tax increment grant with Langtree Development Company LLC in the amount of 45% of incremental taxes calculated on the baseline assessed value of $70,499,770 as of January 1, 2015, based on Iredell County valuation, based on the following conditions. One, such grant shall be conditioned upon the increment grant agreement, I'm sorry, upon the tax increment grant agreement and an agreement providing for public use of a parking deck to be built by Langtree Development LLC. Number two, such grant to begin only after the completion and approval for occupation of a 50,000-square-foot SwimMac recreational swimming facility, a minimum 250-room Hilton DoubleTree Full Service Hotel and Conference Center, and a minimum 750-spaces parking deck. Number three, any incentive payments to begin as further set out in the tax increment grant agreement. Four, the combined total contribution of the county in similar 45% incentive granted by the Town of Mooresville shall not exceed $14,500,000. And, number five, such incentives shall not be paid for more than 13 years from their beginning date regardless of the amount of incentives paid by the county.
Motion to approve a tax increment grant with Langtree Development Company has been made by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much for your time.
Public hearing is closed. Mr. Smith, would you please summarize the administrative matters on the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. The first item is a request from the Emergency Medical Service to approve Budget Amendment Number 29 for $100,000 to cover the cost of remounting an ambulance. Second item is a request from the Register of Deeds to approve Budget Amendment Number 30 for $273,280 for upgrades to computer hardware and software. And this is being taken from the Register of Deeds Tech Fund. And a request from the Tax Administration for approval of the April refunds and releases.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chairman Norman made the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Item nine, announcement of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. We have five announcements this evening. Two announcements for the Industrial Facilities and Pollution Control Financing Authority, two announcements for the Centralina Workforce Development Board, and one announcement for the Mitchell College, Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees. There is no action required on this item. They will be heard once we receive nominees. Item 10, appointments to boards and commissions. Mr. Smith, if you could summarize that?
The first appointment is to the Troutman Board of Adjustment, one appointment, and Bill Booker has been recommended by the town.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we appoint Mr. Bill Booker to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Wayne Rogers to the Troutman Board of Adjustment.
Motion to, made by Commissioner Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
The second item is a appointment, two appointments to the Troutman Planning Board, Randy Farmer and Mike Todd. The town has asked that these be announced and appointed tonight, which would require a suspension of the rules.
All right. Any discussion on those appointments? Is there a motion to suspend the rules and to combine the announcement and hearing for the appointment?
Motion to suspend the rules, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Now, is there a motion to appoint Randy Farmer and Mike Todd to the Troutman Planning Board?
I'll offer that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson's motion is on the floor. Any comments? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item 11, unfinished business. We have the monthly inmate reduction report from Ms. Beth Dirks.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you will notice, before you on the bench is the report for the month of April, and this is actually a running total that goes all the way back to when the program began, which was in February. As stated last month, I have gone back and cleaned up the numbers, the days reduced for the month of February, so this accurately reflects for all three different agencies the actual numbers that month that were saved. So for example, there may be an inmate that was processed back in February, but there, the date that the case was disposed was in February, but they may have had a court date set several months out. So we only counted the days in February and then counted those other days in the other months that those days were actually saved. So this gives you a running total with the jail position, the bailiff position, the APA program, and the new ADA position. Again, just a reminder that the ADA position, these are just the inmates and the cases that are disposed of by that new ADA that the county is funding. This is not, you know, all the cases or inmates that are in our jail that are going through and working with the ADA office, but just for that new ADA. I also added, because we had several questions last month about the cost and what the cost was associated for those and the monetary value of what we were saving, the rule of thumb is $70 per day. So what I have done is put what our annual cost is for each program at the top and then equated the savings that we're seeing or realizing with the days saved. And you'll see that in each respective column underneath the annual cost in red. Also down below, just for those that are, that like to see a visual picture, there are two graphs, one showing you the days reduced by month, and then the other regarding the new inmates processed. For the month of April, the jail position processed 14 new inmates, saving 394 days. The APA program processed five new inmates, saving 189 days. And the new ADA position processed 10 additional inmates for a savings of 367 days. I will say that there is some redundancy with the ADA position, so what I've reported to you are the numbers that are not duplicated through the jail bailiff. But the two work hand in hand. So if you look at raw numbers and raw data, the numbers for the ADA position is actually a little higher, but those are duplicated with the bailiff position. Any questions?
So is it fair to say that the ADA position is, is bringing to trial cases that were not for plea but to be tried?
Yes, yes. What they do, they have what's called a rocket docket that they're doing now. And those that are, that are either willing to plea or the attorney that, that inmate has their attorney, and they talk to the ADA, and if they can work out something and try to get it before a judge, they're getting it before a judge quicker than just having the inmate wait until their original court date.
So these are additional terms of court that are being held because of the ADA?
My understanding is yes.
Is that also in Superior Court?
There are some cases in Superior Court, yes, sir.
And you will be phasing out the reports on the APO piece that will terminate within a couple of months, is that right?
July the 7th is actually the termination, the official termination date for the APO. We will continue to track those. They will not accept any new clients, but they'll continue to try to work the clients that they have existing in the program through the program, and the termination date is July the 7th.
Are there any additional comments or questions, Ms. Dirks? I appreciate your crunching numbers, and I know it's difficult to sort out in the right column when there's some duality and involvement of indeed almost everyone in the system to produce the result, but in the end, as long as we're not double counting, you know, it goes in one column or the other.
Yeah.
But the end result is, is a savings.
I will say that the three different agencies that I'm working with, they've done a great job in getting the data to me, so they've, they've done a great job with that. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a, moving on to item 12, this is a public comment opportunity for the, for the public. I do not have anyone signed up this evening. Is there anyone in the audience that missed the sign up but would like to be heard? Appearing to be none. We'll move on to item 13, new business, which was, we had a resolution concerning the I-77 toll road proposal to be made by Mr. Robertson.
Mr. Chairman, as you know, the, the effort to widen I-77 has gone on for many, many years. And, you know, it started out as an HOV lane proposal, and it's, it's morphed into, into a current form, and all of us are aware of some of the shortcomings of the current toll road proposal. And, and we've all received a lot of feedback from, from citizens in their opposition to the tolls. And, and even though I think all of us agree that the, that the current proposal for the toll roads, we don't like, I think we also agree that this started out to be a very good effort, a positive effort, and it was, and it was well-intentioned, but like they say, the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and unfortunately, I think this is probably a, a project that fits that bill. I'd like to offer the following resolution for the Board's approval, and I'll read it now, if that's okay. The title is "A Resolution Requesting a Full and Complete Review from the North Carolina Department of Transportation Regarding the Contract to Widen I-77 with Toll Lanes. Be it resolved by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, whereas for a decade, various regional transportation planning boards, the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and many North Carolina state representatives, state senators, and governors have all made sincere, good-faith efforts to both fund and widen the congested lanes on I-77 between Huntersville and Mooresville. And whereas during the time of these efforts, the ability of the state of North Carolina to fund the I-77 widening project was severely constrained by negative economic and fiscal conditions, thereby necessitating exploring alternative financing methods and public-private partnerships. And whereas the state of North Carolina's fiscal posture and economic outlook has been significantly improved through the efforts of the legislature, legislature and governor, thereby calling into question the underlying assumptions driving the current financing model. And whereas the comprehensive agreement between the North Carolina Department of Transportation and I-77 Mobility Partners was executed on June 26, 2014, and whereas the comprehensive agreement was amended in January 2014 to remove the planned general-purpose lanes project between Exit 28 and Exit 36 on I-77 from the exclusions in the unplanned revenue impacting facilities section of said agreement. And whereas the Board of Commissioners of the county of Iredell believes that in the present form, the agreement is no longer in the best interest of the taxpayers or the driving public. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the county of Iredell expresses its concern to Governor McCrory, the Secretary of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, and the North Carolina Board of Transportation, that we consider alternatives to reduce the scope and cost of the project while still accomplishing the project goals, consider the viability of traditional funding mechanisms and processes, and delay obligating the state to this current agreement until a full review by all concerned government, governmental organizations, this 18th day of May 2015."
Okay. The motion for the resolution requesting a full and complete review from the North Carolina Department of Transportation regarding the contract to widen I-77 with toll lanes has been made by Commissioner Robertson. Is there any further discussion or comment? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now move on to item 14, County Manager's Report. Mr. Smith?
Just a very short report. Just want to let you know, we're going to be rolling out a new website at the end of the month. And for that, for us, that is a significant accomplishment. It's going to actually, not just going to be a place to go visit Iredell County and learn about Iredell County, it's actually going to be a way for us to communicate better with the public, lot more interaction. We're going to go totally to an online application system, whereas in the past, you, still today, you're filling out an application and hard, hard copy and sending it in. So it's a significant achievement for us. I hope to take a look at it. I'd say June 1, we should be, we should be... I'd say June 1, we should be up and rolling, and we're very much looking forward to it. So just wanted to let you know.
That's great to hear. We now move on to item fifteen, and we will move into a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection four, for economic development. Resume the open session and open the floor for any motions.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on June 2, 2015, at 7:00 PM regarding an economic development incentive ranging between $51,639 and $59,584 over a five-year period for Project Kobia, based on an investment ranging between $3.25 million and $3.75 million in Iredell County.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Any further motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion to amend a previous economic incentive agreement for Project BK, based on an investment ranging between $3 million and $3.7 million, with an incentive ranging between $47,667 and $58,789 over a five-year period.
Motion by Commissioner Bowles. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Any further motions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to call for a public hearing on June 2, 2015, at 7:00 PM regarding economic development incentive of $1,828,272 over a six-year period for Project Abacoa, based on investment of $96.6 million in Iredell County.
Motion by Vice Chairman Norman. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn?
To move.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.